So I'm gonna call the Thursday, May 28th, 2020 Citrus Heights City Council Meeting to Order. So Amy, if you could put up the picture of the flag, I'll ask everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy. And if you would, go ahead and call the roll, please.
I, Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels. Is absent. Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Present.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present.
The video statement, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, June 1st at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Next item is approval of the agenda. Does anybody wish anything changed? If not, I'm going to just take your silence. I don't see a voting on this one. If we're all good, we'll just move on to the next item, Amy.
The next item is presentations, number four, presentation by Republic Services, annual update and scholarship awards. And Anna Rulon with Republic Services will be giving the presentation.
Great.
All right, great. So I'm just going to share my screen real quick. Okay, can you guys see what I can see?
Yep.
Fantastic. Alrighty, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. I love those of you who have the background of City Hall. That is so cute. I wish that I had a picture of City Hall so I could do that. But you are stuck looking at my boring bedroom. So I am Anna Rulon Municipal Administrator for Republic Services, and I'm going to be talking about everything that happened in 2019. And then I'll be passing it off to my colleague Brandon, who will be talking about this year's Sustainability Scholarship winners. And I do have a lot to say. I'm gonna talk pretty fast, but please feel free to interrupt at any time with questions, or I'll leave time at the very end before Brandon's presentation for questions as well. So before I go over the 2019 Annual Report, I would like to briefly talk about COVID because that's on everybody's minds. COVID-19 presented its own set of challenges for us as we look to keep the cities that we serve clean. As commercial trash and recycling decreased with the stay-at-home order, residential trash increased by 25% in Citrus Heights, with some commodities increasing as much as 46%. Although we had to alter our services temporarily, we were quickly able to determine what our new service requirements would be and adapt to those changes to continue to offer the wide range of services that Citrus Heights residents have grown accustomed to. Internally, we needed to make several changes as well. We set up our office staff to enable them to work from home in record time. We altered common spaces in the office to encourage social distancing. We held driver meetings outside in smaller groups where we could ensure social distancing. And this is actually a pretty large sacrifice, as some of our drivers meet at 2:30 in the morning, and they are now having to do so in the dark and the cold. Our corporate purchasing team worked hard to supply our staff with the correct personal protective equipment to keep them and our customers safe, including the miraculous feat of finding hand sanitizer for our employees. To show support for our frontline employees and their families and to stimulate businesses in your community, we supplied our employees with weekly lunches and dinners to take home to their families, all purchased from local businesses. Additionally, we gave our frontline employees $100 gift cards every other week for eight weeks and asked them to use these for essential supplies and food at local businesses. Are there any questions on COVID before I move on to 2019?
No.
No.
Right.
I just wanted to say thank you for supporting our restaurants.
Of course.
That was a great idea. Thank you.
Yeah. All right, so here's a list of all of the services that your residents get with the rates that they pay. We have our curbside normal services. We also have three pre-scheduled bulky pickups a year. We collect extra leaves during leafy season. We encourage your residents to recycle their live-cut Christmas trees. We collect and recycle holiday lights. We have special assistances for your elderly and physically handicapped people residents. We create and distribute the Citrus Heights Customer Service Guide Calendar, and we have our composting workshops. And before I talk about operations, I'm gonna touch on a few of the outreach and education campaigns that we do. So we have our school recycling presentations that we offer the elementary schools, where we talk about the cycle of waste, why it's important to reduce the waste, how to prepare an item to properly be recycled if it is indeed recyclable, the natural decomposition of organic waste, why littering is bad for the planet and animals. And then, of course, we leave each class and student with some free goodies. We have our poster art contest where three, sorry, 13 students from grades K through 8 have their posters chosen to go in the calendar that we mail out. And each year, we work with your staff to pick a theme that is relevant to what's going on at the time. So in 2019, we chose the theme of "No Before You Throw" to decrease contamination in the bins and increase knowledge about which item goes in which bin. We, of course, have our scholarships that we award to three seniors graduating in Citrus Heights. You will learn more about this in just a few minutes. And this picture here is of one of last year's winners, Brian, with our general manager, Tony. He is not one of this year's winners. You will see them in just a few minutes. And then we have three composting workshops a year. In 2019, they did look a little bit different. Prior to 2019, we started to see our participation numbers dwindling at these workshops, so we did two things. We sponsored social media ads so that more people would hear about the compost workshops. And then we decided to change the location of the workshops. Instead of hosting all three at the same location, Sunrise Mall, we spread them out to three different community locations throughout the city so that each resident, no matter where they live, will have equal access to at least one of the workshops. And with the campaign and the change of venue, we did see a large increase in participation for these workshops. If we look at this year, 2020, the compost workshops are gonna be different yet again because of COVID. We are looking into virtual options. The details are still in the works, so more to come on that. We work with your city staff to support several events throughout the year, whether it's attending with a booth and education about their services or providing free waste services sponsoring portable toilets. And besides these events that we work with your city staff on, we also support other events in the community by working with various community organizations and nonprofits. We attend them, we provide education, free services, and sometimes we just sponsor them monetarily. Now, on to numbers and operations. I'm not going to make you listen to all of these numbers. These three waste streams are the main waste streams that get landfillled of all of the material that we collect in your city. So all of the material that goes into the curbside trash can ends up in the landfill. The material that we pick up as illegal dumping goes into the landfill. And then a small portion of the bulky items that get placed out during neighborhood cleanup. So last year, only about 23% of the total bulky tonnage collected actually ended up at a landfill. The other 77% was diverted away from the landfill. Here are all of the waste streams of materials that get diverted or recycled. They do not end up at a landfill. So when you add all of these numbers together and do a little bit of math, you get the diversion rate. And with the diversion rate, the higher the better. We always aim for at least 40%. That is the required minimum based on our franchise agreement. But my staff and your staff do a lot of work through our education outreach to get this number as high as possible. Although we work really hard, it is ultimately up to your residents and what they put in each bin. And so you should be very proud of your residents for achieving a diversion rate of 47.8, which is almost 8% higher than the minimum. We're very proud of that. I'm gonna slow down just a little bit so we can talk about rates. So here we have a chart of the rates over the past 10 years. And if we focus on the third column, which is the 64-gallon cart, that's the most common cart. And if we look at these two numbers, top and bottom, the top number of $22.15 is what your residents are currently paying for their, for service. And the bottom number of $21.73 is only 42 cents less. And that is what they were paying 10 years ago. This is only 2% increase in cost over the past decade. In fact, in the past 10 years, 2020 is the first time that your residents have paid more than they were 10 years ago. While Republic Services is continually adding programs and trying to improve our quality of service throughout the years, we've worked hard to keep this rate steady and low. And we owe this to the fact that we strongly value the partnership that we have with you and your residents and your city staff. I'm almost done. The last thing I want to touch on is the Rush Park renovation that happened last November, because we're really proud of that event. So Republic Services donated $85,000 towards the renovation of Rush Park. Most of that money went towards the installment of a new playground. But it wasn't just a playground. It was a one-day event where over 100 volunteers showed up. And Republic Services cannot take all of the credit for this. We worked with the Sunrise Recreation and Parks District, Rebuilding Together, and various other organizations. And on November 9th, there were several different projects, which included fresh landscaping, especially at Rush Home and Gardens. It looks like a completely new place. It's beautiful. We painted statues, structures, bleachers. There was waste removal. They installed some benches and drinking fountains. And then, of course, there's a playground, which you can see here at the top-right and bottom-right pictures. That playground was not installed on November 9th. That was a multi-week project done by professionals, not by random volunteers in the community. But we're very proud of the playground and all the work that happened on November 9th. And thank you to anyone who showed up or had any part in that. Lastly, I would just like to thank City Council, the staff that we work with daily, your residents, and all of our community partners. We couldn't get all of this done without your support. And I'm available for any questions that you have about 2019 or our response to COVID or the future.
No, thank you for that. I mean, I think it's a testament not only to the contract that was signed, but to, you know, your organization being able to keep your costs down that, you know, in 10 years, the residents for the normal-sized can are only paying 42 cents more than they were paying 10 years ago. I look at any other utility you have and dare anybody to find that out there, and that's probably unheard of. So good job to you, good job to the partnership, good job to us for, you know, getting the contract and, you know, keep up the good work.
Mayor, I have a question. Anna, I know we suspended the bulky waste cleanup. Are we just gonna jump back into the schedule? We're not gonna go back and hit the areas we missed during the closures?
Yeah, great question. So what we're doing is we reinstated bulkies and all of the other suspended services, because it wasn't just bulkies. We reinstated everything on May 4th. So with the bulkies, we decided to stick to the original schedule because a lot of people go to their calendar to look at what months they're going, they're gonna be getting the door tags. So in order to not confuse everyone who was May 4th until December 31st, we're sticking to that schedule. As for everyone who was missed in April, we are making up their bulky. We don't have an exact schedule currently. Your staff, Mary and Kelly, are working probably weekly, talking to our operations team, who are updating them on which days are being made up. I'm trying to think who's on this call. If Tony has any, I think Tony's here if he has anything more to add. But we are making up all April bulkies. I don't have a date that it will be complete. We're trying to get it done as quickly as possible. Do you have any more specific questions?
No, thank you. Appreciate the answer.
All right, moving on.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, great. I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Brandon, and I'm actually going to continue sharing my screen. Did somebody just take that ability away from me? I didn't know you could do that.
Oh, we can do it without it.
You'll just have to reshare your screen.
Oh, no problem. So I'm gonna be clicking for Brandon, and he is going to talk to you about the 2020 Sustainability Scholarships.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. My name is Brandon Colway. I'm a Recycling Coordinator with Republic Services. And I would like to present the 2020 Sustainability Scholarship winners. So the City of Citrus Heights, Republic Services, the San Juan Unified School District, and the San Juan Education Foundation have all come together to make these scholarships possible. Republic Services sponsored three scholarships at $1,000 each for graduating seniors who have attended the San Juan Unified School District and are Citrus Heights residents. Students who applied for this scholarship were asked to write an essay about sustainability, and the San Juan Education Foundation selected the winners based on these essays. The winners are interested in pursuing a degree in environmental sciences or in sustainability. First, I'd like to thank the San Juan Education Foundation and Pam Lipinski for putting these scholarships together. Before I announce the winners, I want to mention that the winners have been invited to this meeting. And I'd also like to commend them for their exceptional dedication to their education as they face challenging times transitioning midsemester from face-to-face learning to distance learning. Now, the first winner I'd like to announce is Annette Sandoval, who attended San Juan High School and is planning to pursue sustainable environmental design at the University of California, Davis. Congratulations, Annette. The next winner, Alina Yoroshavik, who attended Mesa Verde High School, is planning to pursue civil engineering at California State University of Sacramento. Congratulations, Alina. The last winner, Vivian Roberts, attended Mesa Verde High School, and she is planning to pursue environmental science engineering at University of California, Berkeley. Congratulations, Vivian. Again, I would like to thank everyone who made these scholarships possible. Congratulations to the three graduating seniors. We wish you the best as you face the first year of college and a new way of learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, and again, thanks to Republic for recognizing, you know, three Citrus Heights graduates who are doing something in sustainability as they all go forward. So maybe when we get back to live meetings, we can see about inviting them into a regular meeting so they can, you know, get their few seconds of fame on our Channel 13.
Yeah, or get their picture with Mayor and Thompson.
Yeah, we can figure that out, you know, depending upon if they're around for summer or not, so. So, all right, thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Anna. Anything else you guys got, or is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Again, thank you, Republic Services, and, you know, I have to say I touch your calendar once a week, Monday night, before I take out my trash. Even though you think I could remember what I took out last week, I always gotta check. Is it green waste or is it recycled? So I think about you at least once a week, so just want you to know that. All right. Amy, next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
All right. Mr. Daniels, are you there?
You're on mute. I am. So I'll start with the, we had an airboard meeting this morning. There was some discussion regarding the budget and the impact of the COVID-19 issue, and the budget will come in. It gets a little bit under last year's budget. And so, but they'll have to bring it back like just about anybody else on discussing anything after the full ramifications are felt about where we'll go with that. Beyond that, we also learned that the district will join other districts, a couple of other districts, to challenge the federal government's rollback of the vehicle mileage standards from about, I believe they said 54 miles to gallon to the gallon to 40 miles per gallon. And then finally, there was some good discussion on the cooling effects of things such as certain kinds of pavement, roofing, trees, all that kind of stuff. And the most interesting thing that came out of it was that they said that those of us in Citrus Heights and Roseville typically will see a 7 to 10-degree increase in our temperatures based on what's going on in the city. They said that the heat tends to travel in a northeast direction. So very interesting to find out that we have to suffer the negative effects of what's going on down in the city air-wise and heat-wise. But some really good information, and hopefully efforts will be made by people to move in the right direction on cooling in that respect. Next thing is, I'm just extremely grateful to hear that places are reopening. We were able to visit our favorite breakfast place a couple days ago, Rosie's, and I'm so grateful they survived. And I'm hopeful that many of our other businesses survived and will now be able to enjoy doing business, so I'm very happy about that. And then I'm also understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong on this one, but I believe Sunrise Mall is opening tomorrow. I'm so excited about that, and I'm hoping it's true. Hope they'll get their landscaping cleaned up, too. But final thing is, I hope that as all this is rolling along, maybe we can soon get back to some back-in-person type meetings. I think that's important to do the people's business where they can also come. So hopefully, we'll get to that soon, and maybe at some point, we can get an update on when that might happen. That's it.
Ms. Bruins.
Thank you. We had a PAL meeting last week, and we had, it was done virtually, of course, and had quite a full agenda. First of all, we are planning events for late fall with safety guidelines, hopeful that we'll be in a stage where we can get face-to-face with the kids again. But in the meantime, we're doing a lot of things virtually. Our president, Lieutenant West Herman, attended the school board meeting virtually, and also had, let's see, the Virtual Academy partially on the campus. The, the Youth and Family Services Division, I don't know if you saw, did a great video of graduation video for the kids. And they replayed it during our meeting again. Kudos to Sergeant Janet Shaver, who is just so gifted in this area of putting together videos. And so it was a lot of fun, helped the kids to celebrate graduation in a way the best they could, and got such a good reaction that they're planning on doing one quarterly. I think that'd be kind of fun. The other thing that they did is they put together a birthday brigade, and they did 22 visits, drive-bys with all the bells and whistles, celebrating the birthdays of 27 people, both young kids as well as older people that are still young at heart. They also were awarded a grant from the Department of Public Health, which is funding an additional officer, Youth and Family Services Officer, for the next three years to do an educational program on a tobacco grant to talk about the warnings of the negative impacts of smoking and vaping. This grant is a $600,000 grant, which is very generous. They're very, we're very happy to have it. Officer Brittany Savano is going to be the person to do this, and they'll also help fund some operations related to that, that activity as well. And then youth programs continue to Zoom together Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, including our Explorers. And the Explorers are now, have moved to meeting outside. So that's the report from PAL. Also today, I got notice that the San Juan Unified School District held a virtual meeting of their Spirit Awards. And they have, they give seven Spirit Awards a year to faculty on, in various capacities. Of the seven, three of them are going to teachers and staff members here in Citrus Heights. And the first one is going to Krista Green, or has gone to Krista Green, who is the School Community Intervention Specialist at Mesa Verde High School. She was nominated by some students, as well as our police chief and Lieutenant West Herman. Krista serves on our PAL board, and she is just full of energy and is a very big presence on the Mesa Verde High School campus. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge her. And then our second recipient in Citrus Heights is Kamika Hebert, who is also a, I'm not sure if she's an intervention specialist or not. Can't remember her title. She works at San Juan Unified, or San Juan High School, and she works as a liaison with the Foster Youth Services and works with girls that are in the foster system and has put together a, a girls' group called Magic Girls, and she's a mentor, and she was acknowledged for the work that she's done. And then finally, from Sylvan Middle School, Jessica Mendoza Torres, who is a graduate of our school system, is, was awarded, she is a Community Interventionist Specialist Assistant. And she works with girls, again, on the middle school level, that need special help. And she's, she has acted as a mentor. She has formed four different girls' clubs that meet concurrently. And you could tell by the video and the comments from the people on the campus that she's greatly loved. And so I just wanted to say kudos to these three young women for the investment they make in our students in Citrus Heights. And also would like to suggest that once we get back to live meetings, that we invite them to come and be publicly acknowledged at a council meeting. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bruins. Ms. Middleton.
Okay, so none of my boards have met. However, piggybacking off of what Ms. Bruins said, we have, San Juan High School and Mesa Verde High School have virtual graduations that are coming up on July 7th and 9th, and they're gonna be on YouTube. So I would invite everyone in the community to watch our graduates virtually walk across the stage and cheer them on and wish them well in their future endeavors. And also tomorrow, the Sunrise Marketplace and the Citrus Heights Chamber of Commerce will be hosting a webinar on Zoom regarding COVID-19 and the businesses that are reopening and how their resources are available to help them and make sure they're on track to, if they've gotten PPP, PPP, PPE loans, to make sure they can get them forgiven. And that, if you want to register for that, that we use email hread@citrusheights.net, and that's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Portia. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Jeff. The only thing I've had this month was, well, I've had a number of small meetings, but a regional transit met on May 11th, and we got an update on where we were with ridership and our budget. Now, rides compared to normal are 30%. That includes paratransit rides as well. One of the saving graces, and we'll be talking about some CARES Act funding for the city, but they're, they received $95 million, $27 million to be spent this fiscal year, and another $68 million to keep RT afloat in 2021. So those funds will really help. We don't, you know, they're gearing for bringing service back. Now, the service hours are at about 80%, so they definitely have capacity as Sacramento County opens up. And I concur with Brett. Very happy to see openings, and I have a haircut appointment on Saturday. I can't wait. So that's my report.
Thank you, Steve.
From my end, Saqah did meet. Full board, we talked about our budget. You know, there's lots going on in the transportation world. We're having a discussion on how future allocations go. Should they be formulaic, or should they continue to be competitive? So more to come on that. I think we're pushing that out a month so that we can get some input and get all the right players involved. Portia and I, and city staff, and the city manager met with the Metro Fire yesterday in a two-by-two. Interesting to hear their aspect, because you think, you know, we know CHPD is on the front line, but if you think about it, Metro Fire, from an ambulance standpoint, is on the front line, you know, going into people's houses, et cetera. You know, thankfully, city staff and/or CHPD has not had any test, any individuals tested positive. Unfortunately, Metro Fire has had a few. Unfortunately, Metro Fire has had a few. Won't go into the numbers or anything, but you know, makes sense when they're actually out there going into people's houses, dealing with sick, sick individuals. So fortunately, they're all in the recovery phase. Library board met today. We passed our budget for next year. And for those of you who read and like the library, the Silver Oaks Library is one of two in the twenty-eight system, twenty-eight library system that actually you can go online or call and reserve a book. And whether it's at that library or another, they'll send it over. And then you can, they have curbside pickup for you to get your books to checkout and continue with their services. So happy to hear that we're one of those entities in the world. So and with that, that's my report. So.
Amy, I'll turn it back over to you.
So the next item is public comment, and I just received a third general public comment. So I do have three public comment cards. So I'll begin. So the first one is from James A. Chrisamore. I, along with other citizens in my neighborhood, feel that the city should institute a process to call in or outbound calls be made by the city clerk for the purpose of public comment, at least for future meetings, as long as they stay virtual. Regarding the main concern for my public comment, I have seen a decline in the city regarding the homeless, not only due to the COVID nineteen issue, but much like a virus, they are spreading the mess around this, throughout the city. I, along with many others, are fed up with the health and safety concerns associated with the homeless population and cleanup is needed on the properties they occupy, including city, county and state properties. A joint effort with border communities like Roseville State Property Interstate Eighty, Sacramento and Placer Counties is necessary for cleaning up the drugs, needles, human waste, aggressive dogs that block citizens from daily activities. Citrus Heights has a beautiful community that needs protecting from this health and safety matter. Please help me make it safer to live here. The next is submitted by United Core Alliance, Brandon Bolton. On behalf of the, they also submitted a letter that was forwarded to the city council. So on behalf of the undersigned organizations and community partners, we write to express the need for action from the City of Citrus Heights to sanction the opening and establishment of legal cannabis businesses pursuant to the California Medicinal and Adult Use Cannabis Regulation and Safety Act and the Adult Use of Marijuana Act. Establishing ordinances and evidence-based policy with the community support will foster an environment where social goals can be best served and ensure an equitable industry where qualifying cannabis businesses are able to thrive under the state's legal cannabis structure. The third public comment is, the subject was core program by Mark Mabusta. The Equity Program has allowed me an opportunity that would not be possible if the program had not been started. It has allowed me to network with individuals in the industry and given me hope that I am on a path that I, that will allow me to build generational wealth for family as well as give back to the community that I am from.
Okay. So that's it for public comment, Amy?
Yes.
Okay, next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six. Oh, you know what? I do have one more public comment. I apologize. Bill Van Duker, he wanted to speak regarding item number six, and so I can read that one before we move on to the consent calendar.
Yeah, go ahead. Do that before we move on to the consent column.
So the comment was from Bill Van Duker regarding item six. I support the modification of the Planning Commission rules that will limit the ability of the commissioners to comment to the press on matters that are or have been before the commission. As one who has served a total of twelve years on Planning Commission, city and county, it was always clear to me that the time for commissioners' comments was during the hearing process. It seems inappropriate for a commissioner to expand his or her views on the results of a hearing outside of the formal hearing process. And so that concludes the public comment. And now on to consent calendar items five, six, seven, eight, nine and ten.
Move approval?
I'd like to pull number six, please.
Okay, so Jeannie made a motion for, I'm assuming with six pulled, you want five, seven, eight, nine, ten? Jeannie, does that work?
Yep.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, Amy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye. All right, Brett, you wanted item number six pulled?
Yeah, you know, six is kind of coming out of nowhere. I'm not aware of any issues that we've had. It relates to the, the planning commissioners and changing the guidelines for planning commissioners. And I think the concern I have with it mainly is the fact that it kind of muzzles the First Amendment rights of planning commissioners as just citizens after the fact. And so, meaning after action by the planning commission. We certainly have to be very careful as council members, planning commissioners, all of that in regards to our comments before items are decided because we don't want to be seen as making, as making, have been made up our minds before we've been presented all the information. But after the fact, I think is not an issue necessarily. And then there's also some concern on the social media side. There are times when I follow social media very carefully and there are things that can come up on social media pages where there is misinformation out there. And at times I'll comment about an item in regards to the factual side of it and, and not necessarily the way I might vote on something, but more on the factual side of it. And I don't see that as a problem also. If somebody, again, simply sitting on the planning commission has an absolute right to express, you know, a First Amendment comment regarding that type of thing. So I think we, this kind of came out of nowhere and I think it would be important to maybe hold off on it, bring it back, maybe have the city attorney make some comments and or give us some sort of guidance on the the First Amendment side of it and, and where we're at with that. So I'd like to see it pulled for now and discussed later.
Okay. Well, I would disagree with your comments. I mean, if you think about a planning commissioner, right, most of them, it's their first foray into any type of government action. And, and we have actually had some where they were talking to the media. Couple instances where they were talking to the media prior to measure coming before them, whatever the, you know, item was. And legally, that can put the city in hot water. The other thing, when you talk about after, you know, there, depending upon what's said, that could also jeopardize it as well as it still has to come before the city council. You know, you would think learned people would know that, but I would actually point to a case that just was adjudicated last month. Now granted, it was a council member, but it was in the City of Sacramento where, you know, a council member basically by talking about something before it came to them, you know, the court said that they were biased, so it was overturned. So I, I look at this as, you know, one, it's our responsibility to put some guardrails around people that we appoint to a position, especially if they don't have that background. I, I don't look at this as affecting anybody's First Amendment's rights. You know, when you're talking as a planning commissioner, you're talking as a planning commissioner. You know, I mean, and you have to understand what those rules are. So I look at this as basically putting those rules, you know, as the city sees them, as we see them out there, one. So so we can do one of two things. If we can either have a motion to move this forward, get it seconded and voted, or we can have a motion to pull it and get it seconded and have a vote. So what's the pleasure of the council?
I move to put the item forward.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Amy, can we have a roll call, please?
Let me be clear on the motion. The motion was to move it forward. So that is the board actually approved the resolution now?
As it's written, yes.
Okay.
That was my second also.
Yep. Go ahead, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Middleton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes for one. Next item into public hearings.
The next item is public hearing, item number eleven. The subject is zoning code update, accessory dwelling units. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution amending the zoning code in regard to accessory dwelling units and introduce for first reading amendments to the zoning code regarding accessory dwelling units and definitions of the zoning code.
Good evening, council. Alison Bermuda is here with the Planning Division with this item tonight. As mentioned, we're proposing an update to the zoning code on accessory dwelling units. And just to remind you, what an accessory dwelling unit is, is we've, this is kind of a new term over the past couple of years. We used to call them granny flats or in-law quarters, secondary units. So accessory dwelling units are the small structures that are put on properties. And they're on the same property as a house. So you'd have a main house and then you have a second unit that would hold another family or a rental unit or something like that, but it would be separate from the main house. They range in a variety of sizes from a hundred and fifty square feet up to twelve hundred square feet and can have one, two, three bedrooms. They are usually detached from the main house. That's the one that we see the most often. There sometimes they are attached, so they, they share a common wall with the main house or their interior. This is kind of new that's coming about that we'll talk about in a second. But they also have interior ones, and these are ones that are built within the existing frame of the house. Just to show you some pictures of what ADU can look like. So we have a detached unit or garage is being used with an upstairs apartment. On the right, we have a house that did an addition. This is an attached unit. And then on the lower left, this is a detached accessory dwelling unit. And then the other one is another detached unit, like a little cottage. So a variety of styles and shapes and ways to accommodate an accessory dwelling unit on a property. A new term that we've added into the zoning code is a junior ADU or JADU. And so these are an internal unit. So you have your house and then within your home, you convert an existing bedroom. Typically a bedroom that's converted into a separate unit. By law, these are less than five hundred square feet. They must have an efficiency kitchen, which is not a full cooking kitchen, but it must have some sort of cooking facility. So it could be as small as a microwave. They have a bathroom accessible, so that means they can have a bathroom inside their, their little five hundred square foot space, or they can actually share the bathroom with the main house, but they must have accessibility to a bathroom for it to be considered a separate unit or junior ADU. They have an entrance outside, so they have to be able to connect to the outside right from the junior ADU. So they could, the unit could open up into the house, but then they also must have another door directly to the outside. And either the junior unit, which is the internal one to the house or the main portion of the house must have the owner occupied. And then the, if these are constructed, there is a deed restriction requirement that's placed on the property that outlines the requirements for this to be considered a junior ADU. And junior ADUs came about a couple of years ago through state law. At that time, the city did not adopt the regulations. They were an option. But with the most current legislation that was adopted this year, the state now mandates that we have this junior ADU ordinance. And so these requirements are taken right out of the law. And remind you some of the benefits of ADUs. They have a lower cost construction, typically you don't have to buy land, so the construction costs are much lower. It allows families to kind of age in place, and this is probably our most common use of an ADU that we're seeing. And so either the senior parent will be brought to live at the facility, live at the unit, a D chat, so it keeps them close to family but not under the same roof. It's also used for some young families are also doing them. So families are building an ADU for their young starter families to come join them on their property. And it also can be used for an income source, as they could be rented units. Some really want to talk about, just to let you know, the success that we've had with ADUs. We've really seen an increase in interest in them and it's, we've had some great successes. And if you, two thousand and six is when they really first started becoming popular. And then two thousand and seven through, all the way through two thousand and seventeen, they started increasing in popularity, but they still had, were a little bit difficult to process. So in twenty seventeen, we changed our zoning code. We did some significant amendments to our code. We eliminated the parking requirements and several hurdles were removed from the code to make it easier because we wanted to encourage these types of units. So from two thousand and six to two thousand and seventeen, we had permitted twenty-one ADU units. So about two a year. So we're not bad, but not a significant number. But then when we upgraded the code in two thousand and seventeen, since that time, it's really taken off. And just in just this two-year period, we've done twenty-six permits. So our average is really jumping up. We went from, to about thirteen a year. And just seven alone have been permitted this year from January to April. So it's as these laws relax, the code gets more relaxed and it makes it easier to accomplish them. We are seeing families and properties take advantage of them. So some successes and I think more to come this year. As in twenty seventeen, the state provided some legislative changes that we had to accomplish, which we did. And again, in twenty twenty this year, the state also rolled out some additional changes. And that's part of why we're here tonight is to make sure that our code is current with the changes that they enacted beginning in January. Many of the stuff that they required, we already had in our code. We were kind of aggressive in twenty seventeen. And so some of this, some of their requirements that they are just doing, rolling out in twenty twenty, we've already been doing for a couple of years. But there are some other changes that are included. The JADUs, as I mentioned, is one. Another significant change is now they require us to allow these ADU, the ADU units on multifamily properties. So we'll talk about that in a second. They've lowered the setback allowance, so the minimum setbacks that we can require for a property, they have lowered that. They used to be limited to two bedrooms. Now there is no limit, just the size allowances. And another piece of the legislation is there is a delayed enforcement piece. So a property owner has an ADU on their property and it was constructed or created over time illegally, which would be unpermitted, basically didn't have inspections or obtain any permits. And they want to legalize it. They can come into us and ask for delayed enforcement and they're given a period of time to work through getting that legalized. So that's been a great piece. We haven't used any yet, but I want people to know that if they do have these units, we want to make sure that they're safe. And so you can request this delayed enforcement so we can ultimately get them legalized. So talk about the new size allowances. Before, we had a maximum size limit of ADUs, which we still do have, but the law kind of reversed things. It's a little bit different thinking as they provided minimum sizes. So these minimum sizes of the ADUs are the mid, the size we must allow someone to build on their property. So different calculations are used to determine where a unit can be built. You have setbacks, you have lot coverage and a number of factors. So if you apply all the standards and you could only build a four hundred square foot ADU, the law has no, we have to allow at least this eight hundred, eight fifty or a thousand, just depends on the circumstances. So it's a little bit different thinking, but getting used to thinking that way. So does not require someone to build this size. That's an important, they don't have to build this size, but it just means that we have to at least allow these minimum sizes. So one bedroom would be eight hundred fifty, a two bedroom would be a thousand. And then if their, their lot is exceeding the allowed lot coverage. And then if their, their lot is exceeding the allowed lot coverage, we have to allow at least eight hundred square feet. We still do have the maximum size allowances as we had before, which is the twelve hundred square foot if it's a detached unit. And then if you're attaching it to your home, you're limited to the sixty percent of the primary unit, those we had in place prior. One change that we did due to our code, we allowed units twenty, twenty-four feet, depending on where they're located. The law did say we have to allow at least sixteen feet in height. And so we have adjusted our code to use the sixteen-foot height limit, with the reason being that, as you'll see in a minute, the setbacks are greatly reduced from what we applied before. So the thinking was, well, let's stick to the sixteen feet that we must allow, since they can be closer to the property. It will provide a little bit more protection to the surrounding properties if we lower the height limit. So if you're going to construct a brand-new ADU, so this is one that you're building or placing on your property, you can do that with the four-foot setbacks. It's the rear and side yard setbacks. So the new structure can be four foot from the property line. If you have an existing residential accessory structure, so this could be a garage, a barn, a pool house, some sort of building that exists on your property now, and it was built legally, no matter where that is placed on your property, you can convert that into an ADU as it sits on the property with the existing setbacks. And existing, and if you have this existing residential accessory structure, so the barn or the garage, but maybe it's old or for whatever reason, you need to remove it, you can remove it and replace in the exact same location regardless of the setbacks in the accessory dwelling unit. So these are significant changes. Before, a minimum setback was five feet. And new structures had to meet the current setback requirements. But as per the new state law that came into effect, these are the allowances for setbacks for these units. As I mentioned, now you can also have one on a residential family lot. So apartment complexes can also take advantage of this. They can convert existing space on their property to ADUs. So if they have an existing building, they can, it can be converted to a living unit. An example of this is we're working with one apartment complex now who wants to take advantage of this, and they have an existing racquetball building. And it's an enclosed structure. It's been there, and so now they would like, since it doesn't get used, they want to convert that. They would get four additional units on their property through this method. In addition to the conversion of existing building, they can also construct two additional ADUs on their property. And as far as conversion of the existing building, they are limited to increasing the density or the number of units to no more than twenty-five percent. And then also in the law, which is something we haven't had before, the state law did restrict ADUs from being short-term rentals, with the reason being that they are relaxing the requirements for ADUs really to encourage housing. We all know that there's a great housing need. And so they were really trying to restrict people from taking advantage of these new or relaxed laws for rental units through, for travel or Airbnb or whatever methods and use of the short-term rentals. So they had a caveat in the law that certain ADUs could not be used for that purpose. And it was written right in the law. And actually, it was kind of complex. It was like only certain size ADUs in certain locations could receive this benefit. So our recommendation, this is not in the law, but this is what I propose in the ordinance to you, is that we restrict all new baby ADUs that are built beginning January of this year from short-term rental use. So that would make it much more clean and simpler for people to understand that if you're going to build an ADU beginning January one of twenty twenty, it cannot be used for short-term rentals. So that is up for discussion if you agree or disagree, because that is a staff recommendation.
Ally, question?
Uh huh.
What's, what, what is considered a short-term? How do you do?
It's less than thirty days.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would be like an Airbnb?
It'd be Airbnb or whatever the other services are. Yeah, where you maybe come to town to visit family, and you use it as a hotel, or you're in town for business, and you would use it, you know, for a short period of time. If you stay thirty-one days, you're good, but it's the thirty days or less.
So you couldn't use that as an auxiliary unit for just family visiting, you're saying?
You could, yeah, because it necessarily wouldn't be rental. I mean, you can use it, you know, for family, but it's the collection of rent.
Get you right. Okay, got it.
I got, what, another question before we move on?
You got it.
If, if we, if a person increases the setback, could you increase the height? Or are we restricting the height no matter whether it's a less of a setback than normal?
We kept it at sixteen feet unless it's like the second story, you know, above an existing garage, then we allowed an extension of height.
Okay.
Because it would be above an existing garage. But other than that, it would be the sixteen feet. If they attach it to their house, if it's attached to the house, they do get the same height limit as the house. So the sixteen feet would be just your detached units.
Allison, one question real quick regarding that height. Is there something in there that also would protect the privacy of people, say, behind that home who did not move there with two-story homes? And all of a sudden, something is built and is allowed to go higher. Now here are these windows overlooking their property. Is there anything that is considered there?
Yes, so in part of our standard that we'll carry over, we had this already, that if the neighboring house is within fifteen feet, so this isn't to the property line, but each of the other house, then they can't have a window on that side, or it has to be above, you know, height. Has to be high up on the wall. So you can't peer out. So that standard would, would remain in the code.
So it, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify that. And that they could put a window on the backside if the house was sixteen feet away?
Yes, let me check the window. I think it's fifteen feet. Yeah, accessory unit, if it's closer than fifteen feet to another unit, to another residential unit, then they can't have any windows facing that direction.
This seems like an extremely small distance, but I, I mean, I don't even understand how we can get to only sixteen feet or fifteen feet when these things are going to be further away from fences to begin with, aren't they? Most likely, each house is not going to be lined, like backed up right to a zero property line or kind of thing.
It depends on how the unit transpired, if it's an existing structure that was built at that location on the property line, or now with this four-foot setback. It could be four foot away from a property line. And then so the neighbor may have a ten-foot setback. So that would be, in theory, could be fourteen feet away. So in that case, they couldn't have a window facing that direction.
And I don't think we have a lot of homes like this, but there is some homes that are designed with kind of the home up front, the garage more in the back. And I would be very concerned about us allowing somebody to build up in that situation. And literally, I mean, I think fifteen feet is just so extremely short that, you know, all of a sudden, now you're looking out to people peering into your backyard. I, I would just hope that we might extend that, if the other council members feel anything on that. But it just seems extremely small, small distance-wise.
What is, what does a state require, Ally? What? How, how are we restricted by the state's mandates?
Design features are somewhat limited, but we can, we did have that code, that requirement in our code before, and we can keep it. We could consider increasing that. I don't know how it will play against the state, because they have removed a lot of our design stuff from the law that we can't control. But we certainly could put it in. This does have to go to HCD for approval once it's adopted and receive their comments back and see what they say.
I used to live in a community where we had, you know, three feet between dwelling units and the property line, almost like a zero lot line, and it was really close. So so I think, you know, breast point is well-taken. I, I'm just trying to visualize it. In my neighborhood, you know, we have backyards. And so, so even if there was a house that was four or five feet, if I had a, an auxiliary unit that was four or five feet from my fence line, the, the house that my yard backs up to is probably twenty-five or thirty feet away, maybe forty, you know. So that, that's, that would presume almost that houses don't have a backyard. Or it could be auxiliary building to auxiliary building.
Yes, both. If you have two properties side by side, each one could utilize the four-foot setback. And so one unit can be four foot on one side of the property line, the other unit next to it could be four foot on the other side.
Right.
So they're really within the eight feet.
The current code would address that, right, which we're keeping in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Now this, the reduced setbacks are, are very tight, much smaller setbacks than what we're accustomed to. Any more questions? All right. The next item for your consideration is another part of the law, but it's not part of the ordinance and the zoning code, but I wanted to bring it up. And the resolution that you're presented tonight includes this in there, so we can just be clear. So it very, so it's written how we're interpreting the law. So the law also had put in the statements about impact fees, of when impact fees for these units may be collected. Eight, really, the intent of the entire, all the changes they did, you know, as I mentioned, were to really encourage the development of these units. And so they went at all different angles, coming up with ways to remove hurdles, so these get constructed. And so this one has to do with the fees. So as you know, impact fees are collected when someone builds, does construction, whether it be commercial or residential. And residential units pay a variety of impact fees. So the law now states that ADUs constructed that are seven hundred and forty-nine square feet or less, so under seven hundred feet square feet, we cannot collect the impact fees. And then in units that are seven fifty and, or more, we can collect the fees, but they have to be at a, some factor of a single-family unit. They can't be the full rate of a traditional single-family house. So they didn't really define of what that rate is. So looking at different jurisdictions and doing different studies, we felt that just go, just taking the ADU fees and cutting them half or charging fifty percent rate for the single-family felt appropriate. Other service agencies that already had a reduced fee collection, that's the method they had been using, like FIRE had already reduced their fees in half some time ago. And park fees were already reduced, so we carried over that. Including the resolution tonight is just kind of codifying this interpretation for our purposes. So just to give you an example, previously, we would have collected thirty-four twenty-three on a unit for impact fees. Recalculated this fee, this would be permit fees and impact fees. And with the reduced fee of impacts, it does bring the total cost down to twenty-five eighty. So that, so while that's not half, it is half of the impact fees, but then it's the permit fees as well.
Allison?
The savings, yep.
How'd they come up with seven hundred and forty-nine square foot when the minimum size is eight hundred?
I wish I knew that.
I can skip this sheet, I think.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're going to build an ADU and you make it seven hundred and forty-nine square feet or less, you're going to save quite a bit of money, because you're not going to pay some, about twenty-five hundred dollars in impact fees. So that's the, that's the recommendation, and that's included in the resolution that you have provided.
I guess an ADU could be smaller inside a house.
It could.
Yeah, existing. Another quick question. Will we be offering any kind of stock plans, some pre-engineered plans on these?
That's something we're, yeah. We're hoping to do that. We're, we're, have some programs in mind that we're looking as having some, like, pre-approved plans. That seems to be a big hurdle for people, you know, is finding the designer, the architect to prepare the, prepare the plans. So we're hoping to come up with that program and rule it out, where we would have pre-approved plans. So that would save them quite a bit of money on that front as well. They wouldn't have to hire a designer, architect. And I don't have to mention to you about the general plan, but how it encourages housing and a variety of housing, and obviously that all these ADU amendments and supporting the ordinance to amend these and make it easier to construct an ADU really goes towards that goal. And I have to answer any questions that you have, and then recommend the motions I have on the screen for you.
Any questions for Allison from council?
No.
Okay, hearing done. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Amy, have we had anybody submit anything in particular on number eleven?
Yes, I actually do have one comment that was received for item eleven. It was from Beth Moran. She just was asking, I would like to ask the council to educate the public as to the number of ADUs currently built in Citrus Heights to better understand the impact of adopting the resolution. Item eleven on agenda. I have tried to find out how many units there are citywide currently, but there is no accounting available to my knowledge. Thank you for your help in obtaining this information.
Seeing that there's no other public comment on this item, I will close with a public comment. Close public hearing, sorry. Any additional questions or comments from council? If not, I will entertain direction. Can we put the motion?
Just a comment, and I think that the staff report spoke to the number of units that we've seen apply. Other than that, you know, some of them may be forty, fifty years old, and we have really no way of knowing if they're out there until something happens to cause us to go onto the property, so.
Okay, what's your question?
So I, I, I move that we adopt the resolution. Torsey, attorney, do you want two separate motions on this?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I move we adopt motion one, the resolution finding that the amendments to the zoning code regarding accessory dwelling units are categorically exempt from SEQA per section, the section fifteen two eighty-two H of the guidelines, and that impact fees collected for accessory dwelling units will be in compliance with Senate Bill thirteen, Assembly Bill sixty-eight, Assembly Bill eight eighty-one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Amy, can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye. Motion passes five zero.
And I also move that we adopt motion number two, which, and that we introduce by reading by title only and wait the first full reading of the ordinance submitting sections one oh six point four, two point one oh, oh one five, accessory dwelling units. And section one oh six point eight oh, definitions of the zoning code in regard to accessory dwelling units, as shown in Exhibit A.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Middleton. Amy, if you recall the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Allison. Appreciate your in-depth presentation there. Next item.
Next item is also a public hearing. Amy?
Next item, item twelve. The subject is zoning code updates. The recommendation is to move to determine the proposed amendments are exempt from California Environmental Quality Act under section one five zero six one B three of the guidelines, and introduce for a first reading, an ordinance amending certain sections of the zoning code in regard to commercial recreation indoors, small recycling centers, definitions, and other minor changes.
All right. I'm here again with zoning code updates. It's zoning code night. Um, so we come to you a couple times, um, you know, every couple of years with some updates to the zoning code, cleaning up, um, things and amending different items. So this is really part one of another part that you're gonna see in a couple of months, amending, uh, some sections of the zoning code. Um, as mentioned, we're gonna talk about commercial recreation facilities, small, uh, recycling centers, and some other really minor amend, amendments. But I really wanna talk about commercial recreation facilities indoor. Um, and so we're proposing amendment tonight to, uh, add a new classification to this land use. So currently, um, commercial recreation facilities indoor, um, use things, um, like bowling alleys, skating rinks, uh, pool or pool and billiard rooms, so very large activity venues. We require a use permit for those activities. Um, but we've seen, um, a lot of requests come through for indoor commercial activities that aren't at that same level or the same scale of activity. Uh, maybe participate in some of these fun things, like going somewhere and throwing axes, uh, to escape rooms. Uh, there's some places you can go and break dishes. So some unusual activities that are occurring in some vacant commercial spaces that are really, um, you know, used for entertainment purposes and are really, um, invigorating, uh, some dead commercial space. We've been getting a lot of requests for these type of uses, and our zoning code, um, the way it classified them, they really fell under this commercial recreation indoor. Um, and so that use permit requirement was applied. Um, as you know, the use permit process, um, it can be costly and it takes time. Um, and so we felt that that was a little bit heavy for these types of smaller uses that don't have such a big impact as a bowling alley or a skating rink. So we're proposing to amend the code to break that into two classifications, to have a minor, uh, commercial recreation facility and also major. Uh, so the minor category would capture these type of uses as I, as I spoke to, and it'll put a cap on them at, at five thousand square feet. So if you're an axtering room and you want to rent a space and it's less than five thousand square feet, and you're gonna operate no, no later than ten PM, Sunday through Thursday, or eleven PM on Friday and Saturday, we're gonna allow you to occupy, occupy that space by right, no use permit required. That will really get, uh, some of this space activated and bring in some new uses into the city that we think would be great. Um, and this five thousand square feet and doing survey of these type of uses, all the ones are generally under that size. So anything larger than the five thousand square feet or use that wants to be opened later in the evening, during the week, or on the weekends, um, then we would put them into this major category and the use permit requirement would remain. Uh, so a facility, uh, that's over five thousand square feet or a facility of any size, but they wanna be open later, um, would still require that use permit. Um, so way I kinda see this visioning is if you wanted to start your axtering business and you found a space, you could come in, uh, without the use permit, open up, fall within these operating hours. Um, and then this business booms and takes off, and you get things going. Well, no, you know what? I'm really wanting people here later. Our business is so good. Then you can, while you're still operating, apply for your use permit and try to expand either your size or your hours of operation. We felt this was appropriate, um, change, uh, for these activities. Um, so that is how we're proposing to amend the code, uh, to encourage these type of uses. The next, uh, change is on the recycling centers, and what I'm talking about in these, in this category is your CRV redemption centers. So these are the facilities that you typically see, uh, behind your grocery store or around a store where you're redeeming your, uh, bottles or cans that you paid a redemption value for when you purchased the product. Uh, so it's generally on your beverage containers, um, juice containers that you, when you buy them at the point of sale in the grocery store, you're automatically charged this fee. And so you redeem them at these collection centers to get your money back. So those are the type of facilities that we're speaking of, um, when we're talking about the small recycling centers. Currently, our code allows these centers, and they can be in any commercial zone. Um, and they do require this minor use permit, which is a staff level reviewed, um, use permit. Um, but they can locate in any commercial zone, and we didn't have any standards as far as, um, how far they can be from other ones or other, um, factors didn't exist on our zoning code that kind of restricted where they could go. So we have a little bit more say, because we, as you know, they can cause, or have caused a little bit of trouble if, on their location, um, if they're too close together. Um, or they're on these smaller properties, you know, tucked away behind a little seven eleven or convenience store. They seem, seem to be a nuisance. So we hope what these amendments, um, will help that. Um, so what we are proposing is that these centers, they must be located, um, on, in a shopping center that's three acres or more. So this will put them, um, on center, in centers locations where the, generally the most sales are occurring. So you're gonna be, um, at a center that's size three acres. Um, and then you're gonna be in an area that's called a convenient zone. And the convenient zone is a half a mile radius around a, uh, facility that has a million dollars more in sales a year. Um, so this would be, let's take Rayleigh's, for example. So Rayleigh's has, within a half a mile of their facility, they're required to have a recycling center. So they're required by the California, uh, Recycle Act, um, that that service is provided. Um, so Walmart Grocery, Costco, um, or even some of the smaller stores that have large sales, they're required to provide this service. And so we want to encourage these recycling centers, because people deserve the ability to return their goods and get their deposit back. But we wanna place them in these convenient zones where this, the goods are being sold and meeting the needs of those retailers. We also amended the code to, um, allow them inside of a building, um, so they don't have to be out in the parking lot. They can be, um, but they also could be inside of a building, or could previously did not allow that. Any questions on those two major topics?
So, comment, Allison, um, you know, I know the way the laws read today. If you sell, um, items and take a deposit, i.e., Costco, Walmart, they're actually legally required to take them back, take those, uh, bottles, cans, whatever, back, but quite frankly, they aren't set up to do that.
Mm-hmm.
How they get around it is they can get a waiver from the state if they can show that they are within a certain distance of a recycling center of some sort. So my question is, we're creating this convenient zone, but have we actually gone out, whether it's the Chamber or the businesses, and talked to them about this very topic?
So to clarify, we're not creating the convenient zone. This convenient zone is what you're referred to. It's the state identified. So the state says within a half a mile of your facility, you're in this convenient zone and, and the recyclables must be able to be returned. So the convenient zone is already in place through the state, through CalRecycle. So what our code would say, if you wanna, uh, open a recycling center, you can, but you must be within a zone, a convenient zone. That will encourage them to locate in the centers where the greatest need is.
Okay, but, but to my point, they don't want them, okay? And the, and how they're getting exempt is by saying, there's one down the street, you know, and I don't remember if it's a half mile, a mile, a mile and a half. The state actually has a exemption if you can prove that. So I, again, I'm just asking, have we gone out before we start changing our, on these? Because quite frankly, like you said, some of them are nuisances, you know, they, they attract, um, you know, rats. They, they, the stuff should be kept in, inside at least in a container overnight, because it, you know, the stuff smells, et cetera. All I'm asking is, is, have, have we talked to Chamber or businesses specific to this particular one? And if not, I know we, you still have time to do it, because we're introducing it for first reading here. But my question is, have we talked to those sources?
To the specific retailers? No, we have not talked to them about this. Certainly can do that, but we have not done that as of yet.
So Ally, is this, is this to keep us in compliance with the state law?
Um, no, we don't, we're not required to do this. Um, that is, um, this is really, actually the county, this is how the county, um, has worked theirs. Um, as they have darrowed down where they can relocate, where they can be located, because they were having a lot of the same issues as we were. Um, so we're not required to do this.
Okay, so what our issues are, that we don't have enough recycling centers? Is that what I'm hearing?
We have, we do have convenient zones that are void of a recycling center, yes. And CalRecycle, maybe they have an exemption process, but, um, the way they explained it to me was that if a retailer is in this, if there's not a recycle place within their half mile, they could pay a hundred dollars a day and fine if they don't have some alternative method, um, to be able to take these cans and bottles back.
Yeah, so Jeannie, technically, a convenient zone would be like, uh, Stock Ranch, right? Well, nobody wants one there, you know, I'll be honest with you.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I'm seeing prob, I'm seeing problem with this, you know.
Yeah, both Costco and Walmart got an exemption because of the one down Al, Auburn Boulevard, kinda near the corner of Greenback and Auburn. Um, so, again, I just, you know, by saying, hey, you can go there, and yet, maybe, you know, in all cases, we don't want them there. I, that, that's the only one that, um,
Well, I, I think-
raises my eyes.
Well, the convenience centers that come to my mind in the scene, none of them are, uh, none of them is what I would call attractive.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, they could, they are, they're bad looking, they attract unwanted people. And so having more of them, unless we're required to, I, I guess I don't understand this whole amendment, and why we're doing this, if it's not required.
Councilmember Bruins, uh, this is Casey Kemp, our planning manager. One of the reasons, um, some of the nuisance locations are kind of located in these tiny parcels without a lot of rules and regulations. And so one of the reasons we looked at the, the requirement that, for them to be on a, a three acre plus parcel size is because in general, those size shopping centers have more strict management, or have someone managing those parcels in a more responsible manner. So that would help eliminate part of the problem that we're having ongoing. So I just wanna add, add that context to your discussion.
Well, I appreciate that, Casey. Um, does that mean then, on the ones that are on these small parcels, are they grandfathered in, or would we have leverage to require them to relocate?
Uh, they would be grandfathered in. We actually only have three facilities in the city. Um, and so they could remain, um, as is and continue operating, um, under their existing use permit. Um, if they don't meet the qualifications, you know, if they close for the twelve month period, they couldn't reopen. They'd have to locate in a new, um, location that met these requirements. Uh, but if they're in operation now, they can remain with no changes.
So this is a standard, basically, that we don't presently have?
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Question, uh, have we reached out to any shopping centers of three plus acres? To see if they would ever do such a thing, because I can't imagine they would.
Um, we have not, and we certainly could, could do that if you choose. Um, the one I'm thinking of is like Rayleigh's, it's probably the best looking one that we have, operates cleanly, and it's on the large shopping center, um, as well, as well managed. Um, and as Casey mentioned, the ones that we have the most trouble with are on these smaller parcels that are just tucked away next to a convenience store, and not in a shopping center.
I, I agree with what you mentioned about Rayleigh's, um, but I'm wondering if that's, uh, the exception to the rule, because I know we were, we were going to have a, um, you know, a development back in that area. I'm wondering, does the, that recycler, um, are they on the same property that includes Rayleigh's and all those other businesses? Because I just think that shopping centers, the last thing they would do would be probably to open up a recycling center. Um, so I just, again, I'm wondering why we're doing this, and there's never going to be anybody that's, uh, of three plus acres who is ever going to agree on such a thing. Basically, what we're, what we would be saying is that we're never going to have any other recycling centers.
I think, um, one of the notions too is that by having them inside, we have had ones that were turned away in the past, that were gonna want to be indoors, they'd like to be indoors, but our regulations didn't allow them. Those have been in various, um, older shopping centers as well. So, um, you know, I think in, indoor, it has some promise there. There's a lot of empty inline shops that could be used for this, but, um, but we have not actually reached out to the property, as you mentioned.
So I, so I understand then, we're not act, actively trying to promote this, but as they come into us, these are the guidelines that they have to, they have to adhere to.
Correct.
Right.
I have no further questions at this time.
Okay. All right, and then the other amendments proposed, um, are relatively minor in nature, nothing like the past two. Uh, personal services, which is a definition we have in the zoning code that covers, um, a variety of, uh, things, um, like hair salons and things like that. We wanted to, um, include microblading and permanent makeup as a personal service. Um, this is something that we went to planning commission, uh, last year, a year before, with an interpretation. Um, so we would consider microblading and permanent makeup a personal service, where it's not, and it's not tattooing is really how we interpreted it before that. So we just wanna clean that part of the code up. We had a definition of pole signs, and then we just expanded the definition of vehicle services, uh, for minor repair, uh, to be more, um, to include more topics, for examples, um, like brakes and tune-ups, uh, because we didn't have that in there before. So, um, it just helps us when we're looking at new businesses coming in to define how we're gonna classify them. So those are just other minor amendments that were included in the code. Happy to answer any additional questions, or, um, if you'd like to strike something or amend something, we could pull it out, bring it back for discussion later, because I said we will be having a follow-up for additional updates, um, later. So if you'd like more done on recycling, we can table that and come back.
I, I definitely would like to, to look more at the recycling, especially statistics, who's using them? Um, you know, do we have enough, uh, you know, do we need to create a solution to a problem that doesn't exist or may get worse, uh, by, uh, encouraging more recycling centers? Uh, so more information, and like others have stated, talking to the businesses and such, get their take on it.
Yeah, I would agree. I just don't wanna create a problem where we make it worse. And again, like I said, you know, I, I just happen to know, because I've talked to both the managers of Costco and Walmart, one, they aren't set up to do it, but because they sell it, they are required to do it. The reason they can get an exemption is there is one nearby. If, and, you know, let's just say that one goes out of business, and then we, you know, they're not going to be, you know, their business model isn't to do it there. And I, I just wanna make sure, one, we've asked the right questions, and then we don't, you know, to Brett's point, I, I, I mean, if I owned a shopping center of three acres and more, I wouldn't want one of these things on my property. And I get what you're saying with management, you know, it might be better, but, um, I just don't think they're, uh, you know, I, I just don't think the, the business model for most places will really support this. So I think a little more work on that one, I'm fine with the rest of it. Um, but if we could do a little more work on the recycling and get some of the questions answered that we brought up and talk to some businesses, uh, I think that would be more palatable.
Yeah, and you, thank you, Jeff, I agree, and, you know, looking, thinking of what, how big a three acre parcel could be, you know, the dog park is, T R C is three acres. And, you know, looking, thinking of what, how big a three acre parcel would be, you know, the dog park at T R C is three acres. And that's not very big as far as having a store on it and then having, have a recycle center and a few other businesses. So I'm wondering why three acres and if we're going to do this, I think we should make it a larger parcel of property. Three acres seems very small to me.
So this is a public hearing? I'll open the public hearing. Um, Allison or Amy, do we have any comments on item 12?
No, I do not have any public, uh, comment on this item.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. And then what's the pleasure of the council, in particular around the conversation we had around recycling? So we just need to make that clear in whatever motion we make.
So I'll make the motion. Um, I move that we, um, pull the recycling piece out of the, uh, recommendations and that we, um, revisit that at a later date and that we then move the rest of it to determine the proposed amendments as stated are exempt from CEQA under section 15061B3 of the guidelines.
Okay, we have a motion. Mr. Miller seconded, Amy Rokel.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Now, also, I motion to, um, move that we remove this section on recycling from the recommendations and that we move the rest of them to introduce and read by title only and waive the full, uh, first full reading of the ordinance that will be established amending various sections of chapter 106 of the City of Citrus Heights Municipal Code, zoning code section as shown in Exhibit A.
Second.
Have a motion, Bruins second, Miller, Amy Rokel.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye, motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right, on to our next public hearing.
Next public hearing, number 13, the subject is Citizen Participation Plan Amendment for the Community Development Block Grant Program in response to COVID-19. The recommendation is to conduct a public hearing, um, regarding the amended citizen participation plan and adopt a resolution approving the amended citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Stephanie Cotter, Community Development Department. Um, tonight, I'm here to talk to you about, um, two items related to, um, the action that you passed on April 23rd. Um, as I mentioned at that time, HUD had not set forth all of the guidelines related to how we can actually access the funding. They have since done that, and so these actions are, um, related to, um, the administrative process that the city needs to do in order to comply with HUD's guidelines. So, this first action is related to the city's citizen participation plan. Um, all recipients of CDBG funding have to, um, follow, adopt, follow, um, a detailed citizen participation plan. It outlines the city's requirements for, um, public hearings, public noticing periods and, and things like that. So the city, um, keeps the community involved, um, in all aspects of the program. Because of COVID-19, HUD allowed, um, their grantees to, um, adopt a mega waiver and, um, it allows jurisdictions to waive certain requirements related to citizen participation. So the new flexibilities that HUD allows include a shortened public comment period and public noticing period of five days. It also specifies that in-person public hearings are not required during this time. We did give notice regarding the citizen participation plan amendment and also notified the public of the upcoming public hearing tonight. It was published in the Sacramento Beyond, May 22nd. We also made the draft document available, um, for public review and comment on the city's website. We have not received any public comment to date. So that's the end of this item, um, unless anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So this is really, uh, setting up lesser guidelines or guidelines, if you will, for the additional CDBG funding due to the COVID, specifically around citizen participation. We published, we still have to give a minimum of five days, and now we need to adopt it.
Exactly, it's just incorporating the flexibilities that HUD has allowed for this new funding into our actual documents.
Okay. Questions of Stephanie from council? All right, this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, Amy. Have we received anything?
Um, I have not received any public comment for this item.
Okay, I will close the public hearing. Comments or the pleasure of the council on this one?
I move we adopt the resolution to approve the amended citizen participation plan for the CDBG program.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. Amy, roll call please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero. Next item, please.
Next item, the subject is CARES Act Amendment to the 2019 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program. The recommendation is to, again, hold a public hearing for the proposed CARES Act Amendment and adopt a resolution adopting the CARES Act Amendment to the 2019 Action Plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Okay, thank you, um. I apologize, it started at the end, okay, sorry about that. So this is the second part of, um, the process for incorporating the funding allocations that were approved at the April 23rd council meeting. Um, as a reminder, this is part of the federal CARES Act legislation, um, and it was approved, um, in March. The city council approved, um, funding to nonprofits and then also $125,000 to create a supplemental navigator fund. Since the meeting on April 23rd, HUD's released guidance, as I stated. Um, and so tonight's meeting is to incorporate those funding allocations that you've already made into the city's long-range action plan. Um, because of the administrative process they've set out, we are amending our 2019 action plan and it's just really to formalize, um, uh, the plan with HUD. The first phase, funding allocations, include, um, a total of $200,000. $30,000 of that was to the Emergency Food Bank that is operated by the Sunrise Christian Food Ministry. And we've received $30,000. Campus Life Connection was awarded about $15,000 to provide community meals during this time and the $125,000 for the supplemental fund for the navigator program. There is, uh, up to $75,000 allowed, um, to reimburse the city for any administrative costs incurred. Um, and then if all of those were to be used for administration, that would leave about $100,000 in funding for Phase Two. So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, do we have any idea what our administrative costs are running on this so far?
I don't, but I can get that information to you, absolutely. So we're currently in Phase One. Um, we wanted to provide quick emergency financial assistance to the nonprofits that were providing essential services due to the, um, extreme increase in demand for services. And we were hoping this would cover costs from April to July. And they have longer to use the funding if it's not all used within that timeframe, but that was the timeframe that we were looking at. And so we're looking at a Phase Two approach, um, from about August to December. And, um, we'll get into the next steps, but before we do, I wanted to turn it over to Lieutenant Morris to give an update on the supplemental navigator funds so far.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Lieutenant Chad Morris with the Citrus Heights Police Department. Tonight, I'm going to give you a brief update on kind of our early wins with our navigator program and specifically how we've been utilizing some of these CDBG funds. I'm pleased to announce that Toni has been working hard and she's managed to, uh, use these CDBG motel vouchers to house eight people. Uh, we've done that via six rooms at a local motel. And also, she's offered 35 laundry vouchers. And these have been really important because they've kind of, uh, given her an opportunity to gain entree with some of these folks to get them into more of a, um, a talking mode so they're more amicable with some of the ideas that she has for getting them housed and getting them into different programs. So that's been really helpful. Um, backing up real quick, I just wanted to go back to the motel vouchers. I'm also pleased to announce that of those eight people she's housed, two of them have already, uh, gained employment. So that's, that's exciting news for us. Um, also, we've utilized the County Room Key Program and we have four people in that program currently. That one's been a little bit difficult for us in the sense that when it first opened up, it was primarily for people that were older that had, that had COVID symptoms. Um, our demographic wasn't fitting that initially, so on the onset, we weren't necessarily, uh, real successful in gaining that as an option for us. Uh, but since then, they've loosened up somewhat and we were able to get four folks, um, into that program. And, uh, since then, now it's tightened up a little bit, so it's kind of, uh, seems to go back and forth. Um, additionally, we've been able to utilize some of the veterans housing to get five folks housed. And lastly, um, Hart actually independently housed, uh, one person here locally in Roseville. So that was a, a big help for us. Um, we were pleased to find out that we, initially, we thought that we were going to need a lot of funding to kind of cover food and transportation costs, but ultimately, ultimately what we found out was that, uh, at least so far, a lot of donations have come in and it's managed to cover all of the food needs and, uh, transportation needs that we've had so far. So in total, we've managed to house 16 people and that currently, based on, uh, Toni's active client base, is 19% of her clients that she's been working with. So pretty exciting news there and obviously she's got quite a few more irons in the fire, uh, if you will. So she's, uh, working hard to get more people into housing. And, uh, with that, I just wanted to thank Stephanie for doing a great job of, uh, managing all the complexities of the CDBG program and, uh, working with us on this, so we appreciate the collaborative effort. And, uh, I can answer any questions if you have any.
I have one.
Go ahead, Jeannie.
Okay, and that is, uh, thank you, Lieutenant Morris. Um, how are we handling the food need? It says to your, buy donations, is that partnering with, uh, uh, an agency like Sunrise Food Ministry or? How, how is food being disseminated?
So there's, there's quite a few. Um, a lot of the food donations have come in via Hart and some of the other, um, programs that they're working with. So Toni, it's not just one source, it's been a variety of different ones. But I know the one that Toni mentions the most is obviously the, uh, the work she's doing with Hart and all the donations that they're bringing in. Because we had a, a plan in place to utilize, um, a significant portion of the CDBG funding to cover food needs for these folks and we just haven't had that, uh, need present itself based on the donations.
Are they distributing it from some location, a specific location or?
It's, it's moved around a little bit. One of the main locations up until about last week was, uh, there's a church at, uh, near Antelope and Wonder. And, uh, that church was, um, allowing a lot of folks to be fed there during the day and use their facilities.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Morris.
I have a question. On the motel vouchers, are we using, uh, Citrus Heights hotels for that?
Oh, one of them that we have?
Absolutely.
So, so that's a great question. We initially, uh, obviously, we're looking at the ranch motel and, uh, due to its limited occupancy um, and also the fact that they were more expensive, uh, we were trying to make the most of the dollars that we had available to us and be as frugal as possible. So there is a location just right outside the city, um, border that was offering us a block discount, if you will. And so we actually went with that based on the occupancy that they could handle and also the, uh, the pricing was, was quite a bit better.
Um, so it says six rooms, I'm guessing that means that on multiple days, we, we've used that, uh, ability, those vouchers on, in six rooms?
Yes, sir, those are the ones we've had ongoing. We started out with four since the inception of the program and we've grown it to six. There's more in the, uh, in the pipeline, uh, but currently, we're utilizing six rooms on a daily basis.
Okay. Any other questions, Brett?
I actually didn't even hear his answer because it, it cut out, but, um, so I, let me just make this comment. I, I would like this to maybe reexamine, kind of, you know, bringing that back into Citrus Heights and supporting Citrus Heights businesses, even if there is a slightly higher cost, I can't imagine it's a great cost, but, um, I'm very happy to see that we've done this because I do truly believe that when people are allowed to clean up and whatnot, um, and get their dignity back, it really makes a difference in being able to find work. And it's evidenced there by the fact, I think you're saying approximately 25% of those, that you did that with, um, um, found work. And so I, I hope we can stay very aggressive on that and especially with the heat and stuff like that that's been going on. But, um, I would really love us to, uh, maybe reexamine bringing that back into Citrus Heights.
Yes, sir, we can take a look at that, for sure, thank you.
Stephanie?
Yes, thank you.
Lieutenant, are you done or?
Yeah, there's no other questions, I'll pass it back over to Stephanie.
Thank you, Lieutenant Morris, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
So, so the next steps, we're continuing to monitor the needs of our most vulnerable residents as CDBG is really intended to provide assistance to our low and moderate income population. Um, and then we plan to present options for utilizing Phase Two of the funding, um, to you at a study session on, um, June 11th. So that is the current plan and, um, I'll take any questions if you have any additional questions at this point.
Just one, Stephanie, and that is, um, am I on?
Yeah.
Is, um, on Phase Two, is that going to be targeted towards essential services as well?
It does not have to be the same. Um, it, it does need to be related to COVID impacts and it does need to target low and moderate income households, but those are, um, you know, the basic, um, parameters that we need to follow.
Thanks very much, thank you for this.
So this is a public hearing and I'll turn it over to you, Mayor.
All right, Amy, do we have any, uh, comments? I'll open the public hearing.
Um, I do not have any, uh, public comments for this item.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And there we go. Go ahead.
I move that we adopt the CARES Act Amendment for the 2019 CDBG Action Plan.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, Miller second, Daniels, Amy, roll call.
Councilmember Bruins?
I, I presume, I mean, that includes the rest of the stated resolutions, so I?
Yes, it does.
Uh, Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Slowey?
Aye. Thank you, motion carries five zero.
Mayor.
Yes. Stephanie, was that you?
Oh, I just said thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
I thought it was something else, no problem. Thank you, Stephanie, for two presentations. Amy, next item, please.
Next item is regular calendar and we do not have any items. Next item is department reports, um, and I don't believe we had any. And the next item is city manager items.
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Amy. Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, Council, good evening. Chris Boyd, the city manager, I do have a couple of updates, um, you know, really surrounding the, it's been really the main headline, um, regarding, uh, COVID, you know, the last few months. So, uh, things are moving, uh, along well and so I wanted to update you really on the Phase Two reopening, uh, that we've been seeing and reading about and, uh, experiencing. So under the approval of Sacramento County, the City of Citrus Heights has moved further into Stage Two of California's resilience roadmap, it's called, to reopen. With additions as recent as this week, we're, um, excited, a significant portion of our businesses are now open. Some categories, uh, allowed include dining restaurants, hair salons, and barber shops, uh, places of worship, and retail. Before opening, all businesses must implement disinfecting protocols and physical distancing, uh, guidelines. To help with this time-consuming and costly requirement, the City of Citrus Heights, in partnership with, um, our police department, has rolled out a free mask program for Citrus Heights businesses. As of today, we have delivered over 10,000 masks to help keep employees in the community, uh, healthy and safe. So all this and more, uh, can be found on citrusheights.net, um, forward slash 1056. The second update is around our great plates. The second update is around our great plates program. So we're experiencing excellent progress with this program. During this crisis, our city remains committed to the health and safety of our residents, especially our at-risk seniors. So we're, we currently are contracting with six local restaurants to deliver meals, and that number's been growing. And, and those are NorCal Subs, Our Vita Cantina, Ciro's Pizza Cafe, Those Coyotes Border Cafe, Beach Hut Deli, and Boston's Pizza so far. We are serving 171 seniors every day, with three meals a day. This represents 513 meals being delivered per day, and 3,591 meals per week to our homebound seniors. We have received over 2 million impressions on social media regarding this program. This program represents an influx of more than $100,000 into our local economy in just eight days. The program will continue through June 10th, and depending on FEMA extensions, may be extended through August 10th, so we're anxiously awaiting news on an extension. So we're still accepting signups for this program from both restaurants and seniors. So if you're interested in participating, or have a loved one who may qualify, please visit our website at citrusheights.net for more information. So Mayor, those are the two updates I had this evening, thank you.
Great. You know what I find interesting about the six restaurants that you mentioned? You know, yes, it's a requirement to provide breakfast, lunch, and dinner, but only one of those five, six restaurants actually typically would serve those meals. So the restaurants themselves are also getting creative, but it's a way to generate income and, you know, let their employees work, so, you know, good for them as well for participating, because again, most of those places are open for breakfast, but they have figured out a way to provide that to participate in this program. So certainly, other restaurants can get creative as well if they're interested, so.
That's right.
Great. All right, thank you, Chris. Amy, next item.
The last item is items requested by council members or any future agenda items.
I know.
Okay. Yeah, and to, to the rest of the council, you know, I've been checking with other jurisdictions out there, there's only one at the moment that's actually doing live meetings, so we'll continue looking into that, and I know it won't be for the beginning of June, but, you know, as we get further into the rollout of the different stages we'll be looking at, you know, whether it's the end of June or the beginning of July, I see the time where we're going to actually have to start, you know, putting on our better clothes and coming out in public again, so.
These are my nice clothes.
Okay, sorry, I meant me. I, I haven't worn a tie or a sport coat in eight weeks, and it's actually been kind of nice. So, so more to come on that, we'll, we'll keep you advised as we look into that, but again, I don't see it happening, you know, for several more weeks, but definitely on the radar, so. All right, appreciate everybody's time and attention, and with that, I will go ahead and close the meeting, and look forward to seeing you on video next time. Thank you. Take care.